Danny, right after we start, if you wanna, after you do call order, we do the pledge. Do you wanna turn it over to Julie so she can explain why she's?
Alright.
Okay, we're ready.
Alright. Stand and do the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. America and to the citizens of this land, one and equal. In our time of justice. And for all.
Yeah, exactly. Almost realized I skipped half of the words. Alright, good morning. First off, Julie is remotely. Julie, if you wanna make your peace?
Well, thank you. I thought I should explain, it was such a short notice here. Today, I'm not able to be with you because I have a severe case of pink eye. And I've been told that I must quarantine for a couple of days. And I, I wanted to thank my colleagues on the board for fully supporting virtual participation and voting rights that allow me to continue to represent the people of Meeker County. It, it happened just overnight and I, I was able to communicate with Andrew. And so, thank you so much for, for letting me come in virtual today.
Alright, thanks.
That's, that's all. Thank you, Danny.
Thanks, Julie.
She didn't have a bus with us.
Yeah, we have stuff on the farm that treats it, you know?
You know, we used to do our cattle.
Yeah, that would require me and a needle in your face. Any of that would work. Such a jokester.
We used to use a powder.
Yeah, I know.
We would have poured it in the eye of the cattle, I remember. But they, they've come, they've come a long way.
Yeah, they have, they have. I wouldn't suggest that in your case, a little unsteady, so.
Well, I, I appreciate all of the kind words and the sympathy, you guys.
Yeah, exactly.
Thanks a lot.
Took a cheek with that one, so. Uh, with that said, end of the pink eye discussion. Any public comment today? No public comment? Looking for a motion to, for the agenda?
Mr. Chair, I'll move the agenda.
Steve makes a motion.
I will second.
Second by Paul. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Consent agenda. Andrew Letson.
Yes, Mr. Chair. Uh, we have approval of the May twenty first board meeting minutes. Approval of Health and Human Services County and Hospital Accounts Payable. Acceptance of a donation of fifteen hundred rounds of ammunition for training from Paul Reedy. Approval of liquor license renewals. Approval of a quote from Marco for the purchase and implementation of multi-factor authentication. And as the consent agenda.
Alright, thank you, Andrew.
Mr. Chair, move the consent agenda.
Move made by Paul.
Second.
Second by Beth. Any questions?
I, go ahead. I just had one. Climate makers. Is that, is that part of, is that separate from the building project?
Yes, it is. So, uh, in addition to what we're doing with the building project, we were also replacing a condensing unit on the, uh, south side of the building at Family Services. That was approved last year. They just came in and installed it.
Okay, I was trying to tie that back. Yep, alright, thank you.
Two items. I, you know, thank you for the ammunition donation. Um, that was sure very important and very useful for the sheriff's office. Uh, and then more of a question than anything, Andrew, on the Marco quote and the multi-factor, will we as commissioners then have multi-factor?
I will, I hope so. I will defer to.
I hope not.
I will defer to Laura's nod of a yes, that yes, the answer is yes.
Okay, because we did learn how important multi-factor is in protecting our county.
Well, I'm gonna have to start from scratch then because I have enough problems right now.
We'll, we'll, we'll work you all through it, as well as we will everyone else.
This is your fault because you haven't been completing your training. Well, what training is that?
See, case closed.
Alright, we'll move on from that subject anyway, so. Any further discussions? We had a motion and a second. All those in favor of consent agenda, please say aye.
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 Motion carries.
Oh, I'm sorry, uh, do need to do a roll call vote because Julie.
Oh, that's right, okay.
That's right, yep, that's right.
Cory, roll call.
Commissioner Olberg.
Yes.
Commissioner Bredesen.
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson.
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt.
Yes.
Commissioner Schiefelbein.
Yes. Thank you, Cory, and thank you, Andrew. We, did we, we need to do that for each one now?
We do.
Okay, so we pushed it through for the agenda, but for now, it's fine. Okay, moving on. Phil Schmols, Public Works.
Good morning.
Morning.
Phil Schmols, Public Works Director. One item for you this morning. It's to consider awarding our twenty twenty four bulk fuels quote. Uh, we went out for quotes recently, got two numbers back. One from Jax of Eden Valley and one from Litchfield Oil here in town. Um, Jax was low quote, so I would recommend approving their number. An estimated eighty-nine thousand, six hundred and seventy-five, excuse me, dollars on thirty-five thousand gallons of diesel fuel. Of course, the gallons, that's our estimate. What we use is what we actually buy.
Mr. Chair, move to award the twenty twenty four bulk fuel quote to Jax Companies for an estimated price of eighty-nine thousand, six hundred and seventy-five dollars on thirty-five thousand gallons of diesel fuel.
Alright, motion made by Paul.
Paul, second, Mr. Chair.
Uh, second by, we'll go with Steve this time. You are on a delay. You have to really be quick, Julie, so.
Okay.
Any further discussion?
I just have a quick question. So, they bid it at two fifty-six per gallon.
Correct.
So, so now, I, I'm just struggling to understand how they can do it at two fifty-six because is it a tax, is there a sales tax that we don't pay or?
Um, could be taxed and maybe a bulk discount. And then, one thing I could add to that is the price we pay will fluctuate as the market moves. So, that two fifty-six is locked in on the day they submitted the quote. But if the rack price, which we follow through Mid-Not, if that moves up ten cents, we pay them two fifty-six plus ten cents. And we review it on a monthly basis.
That's what I wondered. So, the bid really isn't the bid. I mean, it is, but it's.
It locks in their baseline.
I mean, there's thirty cents a gallon difference. I was just surprised by that when gas is what it is, so.
Well, it's diesel.
Huh?
It was a diesel.
And diesel is more, isn't it?
That's, that's, I just paid two forty-something for bulk.
So, that's because of the state tax.
And, and the bulk.
And the bulk, right? Okay, I just didn't, I looked at.
Thirty-five, yeah, on the other thirty-five thousand gallons. Depends on how they buy it too, or.
Okay, we haven't had more than one quote for a couple of years.
Yeah.
So, we've got a little, competition is good.
Okay, good. That's my question.
Yeah, we, we hadn't been getting it just one for the last two or three.
On a year, on a winter like this, probably has a significant impact on that thirty-five thousand gallons.
It does. Um, I looked once and I want to say half the fuel we use actually runs through our motor graders in the summer. That takes a lot of fuel, but snow and ice is right up there.
So, fifty percent of it is the summer work, you think?
Don't quote me on that, but I already said it, I guess.
You quoted yourself.
Yeah, exactly. Luckily, we're not being taped.
Don't record.
Thank you.
Question. Do, do we have the bulk fuel storage for this? Or do we purchase it straight from their place of supply?
So, we call for deliveries when our tanks get low. We have tanks at, uh, most of our outshops and Litchfield, but no, we can't take thirty-five thousand gallons at one time.
No, no. So, they, they come and fill?
Yes.
Throughout, throughout the year then?
Yep.
Okay. They do it like they do fuel oil, kinda?
Yep, yep, we call when we need it.
Phil, and just, I know you got, for comparison here, in twenty twenty-three, it's three oh eight a gallon? Was that on the bulk, on the same quote?
Correct.
Okay, not over. I don't know. Do you know where we, now, I know you don't know the answer to this?
Where we landed on where we actually.
When you, where you actually, it'd be kinda nice to see.
I could figure that out, but no, I don't know that.
Just curious how, you know, year to year, if we, how we come out on that.
Sure.
So, just something more for somebody to try, as soon as the track or something over here, so. Phil'll appreciate that, I'm sure.
Any other questions on this one? Uh, looking for a roll call vote on this?
Commissioner Bredesen?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Olberg?
Yes.
Commissioner Schiefelbein?
Yes. Alright. Passes, motion passes. Moving on. Gregory Landfill.
Morning, it's Shills Landfill, or, ladies director.
Today, you're landfill director.
Today, you're landfill.
So, I'm bringing this up. Um, what I'd like to do is I'd like to increase the demo fees, the demo tip fees. Um, one of the reasons why I think we're getting, we're still getting a lot of volume out of the site, filling up pretty rapidly. Um, a couple of years ago, we had about thirteen years of capacity. Last year, I think it was determined, we got ten years of capacity. Now, we're gonna get a reevaluation. Talked to Stan Tech yesterday, we did, get a reevaluation to see where we sit. I'm kinda watching what's going on there on a weekly basis. I can walk through if you want, so I wanna flip to the next picture, so. Kind of the baseline, I've taken pictures from twenty-one till now. Our, uh, our volume physically is, just keeps on going and going and going. Even though last year, we changed our prices in September to forty, from forty to forty-six, it really hasn't deterred much of anything. The spring, it really took off again. It's still coming in. We got a lot of stuff coming from the west, I think coming from Wright County. One of the issues that I think I laid out in here is that the workers, you know, we give out a, so we had a seventy-five dollar fee for out of county compared to forty dollars for in county. Another reason is that the workers out there are supposed to be asking if it's in county or out of county. They do sometimes, but I think they're inconsistent. And even if they do ask the question, I think, not necessarily, I think the drivers are not necessarily telling the truth on that stuff. We got a lot of traffic coming from Wright County, a lot of stuff from the east coming across, I think, over to our site. Because a lot of people are going to Spruce. Spruce is seventy-five bucks a ton. And they'd have to go up either out to Cold Spring or they'd have to go way over the KNEO line. It's probably just out of their range to, to drive that far. So, I think we're the closest stop for that, like buffalo corridor for us to dump off. And it's a lot cheaper than going down to Biscayne. Um, if you wanna go to the next picture, if you see that baseline there, that's from like twenty-one to twenty-four, that's a lot of volume. That empty space you see there, it was all open. Um, that goes quite a ways back. That's all full right now and it's creeping about up to the road there. We created a new road back in, last year, we created a new, there was a road that went through that, in the twenty-one site, there's actually a road kinda going through that valley. We've since moved that road about seventy-five feet to the east. And now, that whole back part is all filled in and the whole valley is filled in right now. We have some volume, we can go to the south. We're almost getting to the height there on that part there. We've only got maybe three, four feet. Then we're at the top. Talking to the consultants, the backside, we should think about, we just kinda, we just talked about it. We should probably think about closing north side and the east side of the site and start putting the final cover on it. We'd like to have us start doing that now ahead of the, the sunset of the permit in twenty twenty-nine. Apparently, it makes it easier to do that and just start, start doing it ahead of time. So, with that, I don't, you know, I would just like to increase the fees right now to kinda slow down the volume. Mainly because I think, in the past, I think the board, from what I understand, is kinda, we'd like to keep this open for the citizens of Meeker County as long as possible. If we get such a volume there and we have to shut this thing down in possibly three, four years, it's done. Then they have to go to Cold Spring, they have to go to Glenwood, they have to go to Biscayne, they have to go to KNEO.
In addition to our own county residents having to make that trip too?
Yes, they're exactly right.
And pay higher.
So, so my, Mr. Chair, yep, my understanding, Greg, then that once we're done, we're done.
Yeah, so it's like, once we're done, we're done. They haven't been allowing new, there was talk of going, expansion north of the transfer station between the transfer station building and Alpha Dairy. But that would require a liner and a leach aid system, which probably right now is probably three, four million dollars.
Can we just, can we just not take out of county? Why do we have to take county or out of county?
Well, we'd have to, we'd have to somehow prove that it's from not coming from the out of county.
Well, they should be, number one, they should be checking it. They should, well, okay, but you also said the staff, probably.
It's part of it.
They need to start finding that out. Because not only then if we're taking them and they're coming through, they're, are they paying county prices? That's not right either.
Yep, exactly.
You know, I wish we didn't have to take any out of county or we make it so high they don't, it doesn't pay to come here. Because our residents are why we're trying to keep it. They're the taxpayers of the county.
It's almost too bad we couldn't, Mr. Chair, I'm sorry.
No, it's fine.
Um, that we couldn't raise the rate significantly and then allow rebate for in county being sent to an address within our county. So, we knew at least then, you know, it would be, but I don't wanna get into that.
That's a lot of paperwork.
More paperwork.
Well, the issue we have too is it's not our staff.
Yes.
Yeah, I mean, it's not county staff.
So, who makes that correction on the staff? Because that's, you know, that's like theft if they're not, they're not stealing, but somebody is. If they're getting our rates and they're coming, there's a reason they're coming from right to here. It's the price, correct?
Exactly.
Even though they're doing the mileage and, and I talked to Andrew yesterday and as he reminded me, they could be from out of county. And we know by our permits how many are supposed to be, but then maybe they're doing work here or whatever, so it is tough, but we have to. I'm in what Paul's, we have to make it so high they don't wanna come here, if that's the case.
Yeah, well, you have to, yeah, we're, proximity makes it cheaper. If they gotta haul another thirty miles, that's freight.
So, you gotta think about all of that.
Yeah, you gotta weigh all that in, that's.
Yeah.
But we can't have it so high that nobody comes here either. Unless we went to Spruce, we went to seventy-five or seventy-nine, that might take away of revenue that, we might not have any revenue from the site either, which we need that to operate. It's not, it's not so black and white.
Well, this, you know, I'm three and a half years into the commissioner and we've been wrangling with this discussion on this landfill for three and a half years.
Yeah, we took it over in July of twenty-two, the financial piece of it.
Yeah.
So, before that, I really didn't know what was going on so much. And we've got, you know, every year, we learn more and more and kinda more experience with the site as time goes on.
Um, solid waste is a big issue statewide, too.
We've heard that many times.
And right now, I don't think the PCA has any answers. Even if they, we can close this site in twenty-nine when the permit sunsets. They really aren't, well, and right now, at this time, any new sites to open up. So, they're kind of, and they don't really know what they're gonna do either. So, we got us, they got Cold Spring, Glenwood, I think, is about to shut down. That's kind of, that's part of Kramer's, I believe.
Well, and isn't, um, correct me if I'm wrong, isn't there some sites out there that are operating off?
Yes.
Beyond, beyond the permit?
Our sites are up, down, because they have capacity.
They have capacity in their permit.
Our situation here is we may not have capacity for that twenty-nine. We might be there ahead of that.
So, so we're thinking we're getting more out of county than in county?
That we don't know.
So, it's like a shot in the dirt.
Question, then, what is, uh, with Litchfield being kinda center, what, how many miles are we talking to the each border approximately? Then you can just figure out how much per ton it costs to load it and then work backwards from like Spruce and then set that at the level. So, at least Litchfield's getting a lower rate yet. And if they have to haul it from a different county, then it's gonna get eaten up by their trucking.
You know, Mr. Chair, another, another thought, they're rum, they're rumbling across our roads with that weight. And not only is it filling our, our landfill there.
Right. But you wanna get it, you wanna keep it at a different, at a level, so you're still using it. Like Greg said, you don't wanna put it right up to seventy-five or you're gonna, they're just not gonna deliver anything, even locally. Hate to see it go in the ditch. But if you put it down to where it is a break even, so to speak, on the borders, then the other outside county should, that should stop that, you know? Being in trucking and stuff, you know, it's all about how many, how many dollars per mile you're hauling stuff.
So, you're talking about figuring the distance from right to here or from?
Fifteen miles from Litchfield covers pretty much.
That's what I'd think.
You know, circumference, pretty much covers your.
How many?
Fifteen. Gets you pretty close to, you're gonna be a little short of Cosmos and a little short of Kimball.
But I, you mean, you wanna approximate. And then how much do they usually get per ton per mile then?
Yeah.
Mr. Chair?
Yeah.
I have a question. How could we police this, um, dumping of out of county debris into our landfill? Would it be possible for each trucking company to have prior approval or prior permission? If, if they were to say, um, Litchfield landfill, we're tearing down this building and all the debris will be coming to your landfill, could that be done ahead of time to then eliminate right at the site when the workers have to go up to the window and say, "Mr. Truck Driver, is this from Meeker County or is this out of Meeker County?" If we had a pre-approval of a site demolition and the debris was coming to us, is that a possibility?
It's an interesting idea.
It is.
Because then if they don't register, you can send them a permit that says, you know, you're dumping from this job, from this time to the, which, it's some paperwork, but it'll be interesting to see.
And they could give us an idea.
If they don't have it, they don't get to dump.
Yeah, yep. And that would eliminate the people at the site having to make that decision.
Well, I think we're gonna have to do a little more paperwork, Greg, if we don't find a way to start charging people what they, they should be. I mean, either that or we have to have our own, I don't know, somebody has to be accountable. There's a lot of difference between what they're paying to come from right, you know, if they're not paying the out of county and they're filling most of it up.
Well, I think one of our problems is we're, our proximity is Spruce Ridge. A lot of places in Wright County, it's just as cheap to come here and dump as it is, you know, the, the mileage piece. That's why I was getting that before, the geographic.
They certainly know ahead of time when they're gonna have a demolition project.
But we're thirty, well, we're thirty bucks, thirty-three bucks a ton cheaper than Spruce Ridge right now.
For in county.
What's that?
In county.
Yeah.
Out of county, we're four dollars a ton cheaper.
Okay, yeah, but.
But if they're not, if they're not identifying the fact they're out of county, same.
But I'm, that's what I'm saying. We're after the out of county people, I mean.
Well, and, and maybe what we could do, a, and we'd have to work with the staff out there, but, you know, have them require that they, maybe they don't pre-register, but they provide documentation at the time. They provide a copy of the building permit.
The what?
The building permit.
That's a good idea. I like that.
And, and we let them know that and if they don't have it, they have to turn around.
Yeah.
Because.
They don't require a building permit to collect demo.
To tear a building down.
That's true.
Or to collect demo when they're demoing a site. When you have a dumpster.
What did?
A garbage complex or something like that, they don't have.
You mean to tell me they're on a job and they don't have to have a building permit?
Not for taking demo, they don't have.
Not down.
But you don't.
They have a permit for collecting garbage, you don't have to have a permit for collecting garbage.
Well, no, Greg, but if I'm on a job and I'm in a demo part of a job and then build it, somebody's got a building permit on it. I mean, in town, you can't even put shingles on.
They're cleaning out a site.
Well, when I put shingles on, there was demo and I had to have a permit. I can't think of anything that you, so if you're cleaning out a site for what?
Taking stuff out of buildings, old, old farm sites.
Yeah, if you're, if you're just demolishing.
I understand that, but.
Typically, you're right.
Don't, typically, isn't it jobs that they're doing? I mean, certainly, they're not.
Roads, things like driveways, there's no permits for that.
So.
And, well, we have to find an answer because I'm not gonna vote for just raising the price and not knowing who's, these people coming from Wright County, coming into our county and, and paying, uh, resident fees as baloney. So, we have to find a way to solve it. Now, whether that starts with the staff or, I like Julie's idea, maybe it's too much paperwork, I don't know. But we just raised this last fall and we're still having the same issue.
You know, going to do what Julie said.
Mr. Chair?
Scheduling thing, you know? You're gonna schedule how many loads you're gonna drop, where they're coming from. Um, the other, two other things I just wanna.
Hold on, Julie, we'll, we'll finish Paul and you can jump in, okay?
I don't, I don't.
Thank you.
I don't wanna be punitive to our residents.
I don't either.
I, I don't think that's right. This, this resides within our county. And so, I don't want it to be punitive to try and stop somebody from another county coming in and dumping. So, um, that kinda bothers me. And you know what cost? They just pass it along to the person that they bid the job for. So, the cost isn't, isn't really gonna be the driver, I don't think. Um, Mr. Chair, I'll tell, yield to the, the voice from above.
Paul yields to the voice above. That's you, Julie. Don't, don't get too big ahead. I think you just meant virtual.
Here I come. Yeah. I, I was wondering another idea. When, when a contractor places a bid to demo something, like, you know, an old school or, or, or a home, they know long in advance and they can kind of estimate how many loads of debris they will need to haul away. Could we bid jobs like this? Some, some contractor says, "Well, I'm tearing down a school and I want to bid for debris at, you know, maybe a few dollars less than what we're considering in this proposal." Could, could we do that?
Some sites do that already. They'll do a contract fee.
One.
They will do that, but some sites already, but we don't do that. I'm not sure how we would handle that in-house.
Well, Greg, how do you think we can handle this in-house? Because we raised it last time. Now, you're saying everything we come up with, we can't do. And we're still having the same issue. It's like when people call me and say, "There's boxes all over there." And you tell me, "Well, they're not picking it up enough." So, what, just raising the price, we've already done that. So, I'm not sure that that's gonna solve the issue. I like what, you know, we have to know, we can't just keep, it's like if you don't have business on business and you just keep raising the price every two weeks, you know?
One thing it does do is that if you increase the price, we know that we're still getting the volume and it does increase the, the amount of money. We do have to close it, we have to cap that thing. We do need a certain volume.
Well, our goal obviously isn't to close it, is it? I mean, I understand that. But in one hand, you say, "We want more business because it has to run itself," which I understand. And then, then we're talking about if we get too much, we're gonna close. So, there has to be a way, in my opinion, to raise this so it makes sense. And we have to start seeing who's bringing the most, who's got the most volume. If it's out of county, that's wrong. If they're not paying the right amount of money.
Uh, question then, i- is it, so, the guys are supposed to ask if it's in counter out. Isn't there something simple where you can just have them sign and say, as each truck driver, especially the big loads, come in and say, "Sign this, this came from this particular spot." And by signing it, you have some sort of legal obligation that that's where it's coming from? Is there any sort of legal precedence? And then that way, you're not really worried about any extra bookwork yet?
Well, basically, a log of where.
Yeah, a log. It's just something real simple that the guys can just hand to the truck driver and say, "This is where it came from, period." Right? And have them sign it. That might be enough.
Into the window, sign your load in. This is how, this is where it came from.
And.
This is the address where it came from.
Company address where it came from.
Period.
And how, then you'll know how many yards came from that site, because they weigh it.
I'd also encourage adding a phone number because then you could do spot checks and.
There you go. Good idea.
Do a phone call and say, "Just confirming that this load came from here," and then you can kinda just use spot checks.
So, so what I'm, oh, I'm sorry.
It would be a little additional work, but if you just do it through the spot checks, then the county could follow up with it and it won't be relying on.
And, Mr. Chair, my other question is, who controls the staff out there?
So, we have two staff members who work up there and then we have a contract with Endurance who has the other staff.
So, who do you go to if they're not doing their job?
Uh, there's a contact with Endurance.
There's a couple of contacts we go to.
Because I've been out there. Well, I'm not gonna get into it, but there, there could be some improvements, for sure.
There can be a lot of improvements.
But at least this would help maybe alleviate the out of county thing if you had a log essentially in there that you have to sign this in. This is our new thing. You can be real upfront about it. We're getting too much from Wright County. We don't know if it's right or they're saying Meeker. Now, we're gonna spot check you. And if you're not, you're, I don't know if where the legal obligation is if they were out of coun, county, what we have for a basis of the case, if that happens.
We have to send them a bill for more money.
Yeah.
That's, I mean.
I suppose that would be it.
Yeah, I mean, they don't get to do that. That's, it's like stealing, in my mind.
Yeah.
I think so. I think so.
I mean, since it's a, it's, it's a business that we're offering as part of the county, it's not that. We can't set our own regulations, and so I think it would be justified to be able to create something like this. And then, once it's created, I can review with Greg, you know, we can put a little disclaimer on the bottom of it. I think signage would be important in notifying folks, giving a little bit of grace on the front end in case people don't understand, but then. Doing those spot checks to.
I'm pretty sure when they come in and you say, is this out of county or in county, they, they perfectly understand the question, and they know that they're gonna save X amount of dollars.
It's always different, though, if you gotta write your name on it.
I agree.
You know, I mean, that.
And an address. And an address, or show an ID, or whatever.
Well, just the credential, you know.
It's gonna take five minutes of somebody's time, but I can't believe we're lined up out there that we don't have, and, and you're gonna just have to take the time to do.
Thing though, you just have a clipboard, and you have this whole thing set out, and just have them sign it, address, number, whatever.
So, County Attorney Sheebelbein, if we have a disclaimer on the bottom, could it also have a penalty for? Incomplete or inaccurate data put on that form?
We've actually trespassed someone from the, didn't we trespass someone from the landfill before?
We have.
So I mean, there's ways where we could stop people from coming in as well.
And, and that's not to say I don't think we should raise prices, but I think until we, we just can't put that Band-Aid on, we have to stop what's going on.
So, Mister Chair, what I'm hearing is that, uh, the board generally has a, um, a, a direction for us to, to look at other options. Other than the price at this point, and so we will go back and do that, and, um, so my suggestion would be that we, uh, we table this. Not to a specific date, but we just place it on the table, and then we can come back, uh, at a future meeting and, um, have further discussion.
Mister Chair, move to table this land use increase of demolition fees to a future meeting.
Do I need a second on the table then, Andrew?
Yes, you do, and you need a vote.
I'll second.
Second that. Any further discussion on this one?
Do we, do we just simply table this, or do we also provide? Direction or guidance for what we'd like to see happen?
Uh, Commissioner Brodesson, the, the discussion today, I think, has provided us with sufficient direction of the things that you want us to take. We will, staff will do that and come up with a solution that addresses those, that, that we think is the most workable.
Thank you.
Yeah, Mister Chair, the only comment I would have is just that, you know, the, these contractors that are using our fill, our landfill also, uh. They understand where they can go with the least amount of, uh, questioning too, so.
That's fine.
A little more, uh, direction, um, it becomes, the, the tables are balanced. I think we're out of balance a little bit on what we're requiring for people to bring in. So sometimes these, this material coming from out of county, what I'm getting at here is, uh, probably coming from our own contractors within county. Just because it's a cheaper route, so we need to, we need to clean that up a little bit, and that falls on us.
I guess, I have a, I have more of a, um, one, I, I understand, I can see it if it's a local contractor working. Out of county, they should, right? But this sounds like it's out of county people, not necessarily working in this county.
It's, we wanna please all, but.
I, I agree.
Ultimately, we don't know.
I, I agree, so we have to do a better job of trying to find out.
Just a better job of tidying.
Sorry, Dan.
Yeah, no problem. Question Andrew, can we fast track this? Because obviously, looking at the graph, somewhere it's the most, really. Is where the demo happened, so, is there, is it possible to hit it by the next meeting?
I, so, I think that what we need, I think what I would want to do is come up with a process, put it in place, and then come back and report on how that process has worked.
Okay.
So I don't wanna, I, I don't think that by coming back in two weeks, we're gonna have sufficiently more information to share, other than.
No, no, I just mean have an idea and then implement it, right, in sooner than later.
Yeah, no, certainly sooner than later is, is what we're gonna shoot for, it, it doesn't necessarily require action by the board.
Oh, yeah, I don't care about that part, just so it's actually happening at landfill.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, so we had a motion and a second. Any further que- questions? Roll call vote on tabling.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Olberg?
Yes.
Commissioner Brodesson?
Yes.
Commissioner Schiefelbein?
Yes. Alright, motion passes. Thanks Greg, I think you have a kind of a good start to go from. Alright.
Mister Chair, move to move into closed session pursuant to Minnesota statute thirteen D point zero five subdivision three C three. For the purpose of developing an offer for a purchase of real property.
Alright, motion made to close session by Paul, looking for a second.
Paul saga, Mister Chair.
Second by Steve. Any further discussions? Roll call vote.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Olberg?
Yes.
Commissioner Brodesson?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Schiefelbein?
Yes, alright, we are closed.
We'll just take a minute to transition the video over and.